We're live?
We are live. Meeting is okay to go.
Okay. Thanks for all attending. Can we start with the Pledge of Allegiance? My pledge of allegiance.
I give you the flag.
And to America.
And to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and just as for all.
Rule call. Is it just three of us hooked in, John?
I believe we have four. If you can just do, do name, or just name yourself and we'll note it for the record. I mentioned that I know Sean Blackburn will not be joining us this evening.
Bob Zabinski, present.
Tim Janski, present.
Mark Arnold, present.
So we have Bob Zabinski, Mark Arnold, Tim Janski, and Jeff Blair this evening.
Okay. Approved the agenda for April fourteenth, twenty twenty. Any additions or deletions?
No, sir.
See, no problem out. Bob Zabinski, I would move for approval of the agenda as printed.
I'll second that, Jeff Blair. I got approval in a second. All in favor, sing by saying aye. All right.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same side. Passed, we go present. For conditional use. Wade Park Planning Commission will hold a meeting at, well, on phone at City Hall, nineteenth thirteenth Avenue North at six thirty PM or soon thereafter on Tuesday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty, to hear the following request. Request that Nathan Hummer, McZero, Hernandez, on behalf of the church, for a conditional use permit to allow a church in A one agricultural rural residential district. The property is legally described as eight point six three acres, part of the southwest quarter, of the southwest quarter lying east of Township Road and west of Highway fifteen. One fifteen, or fifteen thirty-eight, County Road six, City of Wade Park, Serene County, Minnesota.
All right. I will do the staff report and I will keep it brief. I'll note that I'm using a backup iPad here for the display and my battery life is minimal. I inadvertently lost my adapter for my laptop, so I'm flying by the seat of my pants here a little bit for the display. So bear with me. I'll try to keep it quick. As noted, this request is for church use in an A one ag rural residential area, which is considered a conditional use permit. This property is currently utilized as a landscaping business and has been listed for sale for the past several years. We have had some periodic interest in the property that city staff has evaluated and given feedback on, but nothing that's progressed beyond preliminary interest. The church in question, Primera Iglesia del Senor Jesus Cristo, is pursuing approval to allow basically expansion of their congregation. They currently hold services and space rented from the Saint Cloud School District. And their current congregation is approximately one hundred eighty members. They've outgrown the spaces that they can use and believe that this location would give them some room to grow and expand, which is fairly common for smaller churches. The property itself is set up pretty well to accommodate a church in its current format, so it wouldn't necessarily need a lot in the way of interior build out or modifications. So it's fairly turnkey for a church operation. Their intent would be to allow, include Sunday and Wednesday worship services, as well as children, youth, and family oriented functions that are typical for current or modern religious institutions. The applicants have been in contact with the city building official regarding the structure and whether fire sprinkling would be required. That's something that we identified early on as a potential, not necessarily a hurdle, but because of the expense involved, something they would have to consider. And the preliminary determination after review from the building official was that due to the classification and the existing structure and occupant load, that it would not require fire sprinkling. The access road for this property is currently a public road. It's gravel, but it is currently a public road. It's an old township road. But we do have a joint application for vacation that was received previously by the city and is anticipated to go to an upcoming city council meeting for review. This road is actually one that we identified last year that we would like to vacate because it is a public road, but really the city has not undertaken any maintenance or improvements on it at all. So we thought that it would be ideal for vacation, seeing as it only serves as two private properties there. The vacation of the property would split the road down the middle and turn the property over evenly to the owners on either side. It would be their responsibility to then do with what they will and basically they'd have to have some agreement in place for use of it. And moving over to the site plan here that, or excuse me, the general location map that shows the property. You can see the public road down the middle that services those two properties. I'm just scrolling. I'm just scrolling back up if you can bear with me. I'll finish my report and then we'll open it up for questions, if that's okay. I just have a little bit more to go. The parking area of the property is currently gravel, which isn't unusual at all for the ag or rural residential area. I would note that the city ordinance notes that a conditional use permit would typically be a trigger for a property to have its parking hard surface to be brought up to the current city standards. In this case, I'm advocating to vary from that a little bit due to the limited access via the existing gravel road, even though it's anticipated to be vacated soon in the rural nature of the property. I would request some flexibility there and exemption from the required hard surface at this time. I think that in the future, as things may change or expansion may occur or plating may be required due to expansion or additional buildings in the area, that we, that, at that time, I would prefer to maybe revisit hard servicing, but at this time, assuming nothing changes as far as buildings or otherwise, I would advocate for an exemption from the requirement to hard surface. I don't think it necessarily makes sense in that area and, given its layout and situation there. I would recommend approval of the conditional use permit with the following conditions. And for your reference, I modeled these largely after the previous or the last church use as a conditional use permit that we received a couple of years ago. So these are largely the same and intended to basically have the use blend well with neighbors there, although in this case, neighbors are a little bit fewer and further between because of the more rural area there, but there are a handful of neighbors in that specific area. Number one, existing parking areas are exempted from need to be hard surfaced with concrete or asphalt, provided they are not enlarged due to limited access via current public gravel road. Future projects such as building expansion, new building construction or plating of property may trigger need to hard surface parking areas at that time. Number two, applicants are advised that any need to plat property in future, such as to facilitate building expansion or construction of a new building, will require, excuse me, will result in required payment of parkland dedication fees per city fee schedule. Number three, no improvements or work shall take place on shared access road from County Road six, Granite View Road, unless approved or coordinated with neighboring property owners, owner or owners, unless superseded by private agreement or easement. As noted, this street is pending vacation by City of Wade Park, anticipated approval in May of twenty twenty. Number four, parking is not allowed on Granite View Road or County Road six. Number five, utilization of the property for emergency or homeless shelter, transition housing, or other use shall be prohibited except for state licensed facilities, as may be allowed. You can omit the notation of R one, single family zoning district there. That is a typo on my behalf. I apologize. Number six, utilization of building or building portions thereof shall be subject to review and approval as per City of Wade Park Building Official. All exterior and interior work shall be subject to necessary building, plumbing, electrical, and other permits as deemed required by city staff. Number seven, all necessary construction activities shall be completed to satisfaction of City of Wade Park Building Official prior to commencement of any activities in impacted areas. Number eight, any new exterior signage shall require a permit prior to installation or fabrication of signage to provide for review and approval. Number nine, ground and or pylon signage shall require a footing inspection prior to construction to confirm compliance of city code requirements. Number ten, use of bells, external speakers, or other exterior amplification equipment shall be prohibited, except for special events. This may be approved by city staff. Number eleven, exterior lighting modifications or installation shall require review and approval by Planning Community Development Director prior to installation. Lighting shall not be directed towards adjacent properties and shall comply with City Ordinance five two point four nine point oh nine lighting standards. Lastly, number twelve, at time, city sewer and water may be made available to the property. The property will be required to connect to them and abandon and seal private septic and well facilities within one year. Those being the, my recommended conditions, I can close that. And if you wish to open for the public hearing component, I will note the comment that, one comment that we received regarding the request. And then we can take any questions Planning Commission may have.
Okay. You want to read the public input?
Yep. Yep. We received one, one input from a neighbor, Jay Neville, at eighteen thirteen, Old County Road six. He's adjacent to this property and they would share that vacated road. He, his only, it's not so much a concern, but just that he wanted to note that he wanted, he didn't want them to be able to pave that road in its entirety and then try to bill him for it, say that they have a desire to pave that road for their congregation, just to make it a little nicer, that he would be stuck with the bill. That's pretty much a private issue between, you know, a joint access that's shared, so they could handle it under an easement. But I was comfortable putting it in as one of the conditions of approval, just to give a little reiteration there. I mean, there would be nothing stopping them from paving their half of the property, their half of the road that they would own if they chose to do that. You know, that's up to them unless it's otherwise noted in a private agreement. But that's what drove the condition number three regarding improvements or work to the private road. I think that's a reasonable condition. And from what I understand, there's no desire of the applicant to do that at this time or any time in the future. I mean, that could change, but I don't think they want to spend the money to pave that road just now and they're probably trying to get up and going in the building for the time being. That was the sole comment I received.
Okay. I assume there's no other input there?
That's correct.
Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Bob, Blair, I'm with.
Well, two people spoke at one time.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Uh, Blair, Jeff Blair, I move to close the public hearing.
I got a motion. Do I have a second?
Bob Zabinski, I will second that.
Okay. All in favor of closing the public hearing? Sing by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Public hearings closed at six forty-four.
Okay.
I have a question that I'm just taking it. This is Mark.
Go ahead, Mark.
Okay. John, I'm a little confused on that road. Both of them have property, own property on that gravel road going in there.
Yep. Well, they, they share the access from that road. It's not the sole access for the Cunnevilles on the western side, but really it is the sole access for the property in question, for the subject property. So what would happen is when we vacate that, that road would be split right down the middle and turned over evenly to both properties. Each would get half.
Yeah, I understand. The one that car going into Neville's property is being looked at at the next council meeting, I believe.
Well, the one that comes from the western side, that one, I don't know if that's the one. I think the one we were looking at was specifically this one. I haven't gotten too deep into that request yet because, and that may be one. We may be looking at that one too, just due to the way the council meetings have been following. I haven't looked too closely at that vacation request. We may be having a request through both of them, which would be fine. But this, the one in question that impacts both these properties, that would be split down the middle for sure.
Okay.
If it's something that, if it's something that, say, it only borders one property, that would be different and it would just be turned over to that property in its entirety.
All right. Is any investigation done by you to see or check in to see if this is the best use with this property, with the surrounding properties around there?
I don't necessarily get into the, you know, is it the best use? We go by, is it a permissible use under the ordinance? And churches are very clearly noted as an established conditional use in the, within this district. Granted, we don't necessarily see, I'm not aware that we have another one, but it is a permissible conditional use. And a lot of the ones we review at conditional use level are more of that, that kind of catch-all that we have in some instances that says, if it's not a listed one, we can review it, provided it's similar to others in the area. This isn't the case with this. I mean, it is a church and that's an established conditional use. So I don't have any level of discomfort with allowing it to go there. You know, I think for a relatively small church congregation, the building is probably a good fit just because of the way it's laid out and size-wise, it probably works pretty well for their particular use. I know we've had other interests in it over the years, but it's been on the market for several years. And they just haven't found the right buyer as of yet, from what I understand. We've looked at a couple of proposals that haven't come to pass, but this is the first one that's made up, actual application, so they're interested in it. Seems to be pretty serious.
Okay. Have you ever looked at doing a interim conditional use? I'm just throwing it out there because, you know, it's an odd, small congregation and if it was called true, we might be stuck with a conditional use. Would they need to be changed or how does that work?
Well, if the conditional use runs with the property, so if, if they were to move forward and say, hypothetically, say in three years, they outgrow the space and they move, then another religious use could occupy it, assuming they maintain the same conditions. If they wanted to do anything different or, you know, vary from those, they would have to come back and apply for a separate, separate review and approval. But I don't know that that's honestly too likely. I think it's probably more appealing if it went up for sale again, probably as another landscape type business or something of that ilk, just given its location. The last interest we had in it was from that company that ultimately landed out on Old Highway Road North after some review and consideration there. That was a business that we didn't feel was a heavier use and that was anticipated for a more rural area, so we felt that was more appropriate in an industrial area. And that was a case where it wasn't listed as a conditional use and wasn't a substantially similar to other things in the area where I was comfortable letting it go forward and the Planning Commission and Council at that time agreed.
Okay.
But as far as your other components of your question, Mark, we have to go by the ordinance as it is. Right now, it's listed as a conditional use, which means it's pretty much all or nothing. There's not, we can't modify it to be an interim use or have it come back and, say, five years and re-review it. State statutes prevent that. Some cities used to do that and kind of treat it that way, where you would have to come back after a number of years for review and reapproval, even though it was a conditional use. But that's since been deemed inappropriate and cities have gone away from doing that.
Okay. So this property, when this landscape company come in and got a conditional use permit then? Is that what my understanding is?
I do not know the history of the existing property. Our details are a little bit scant on it. I mean, typically, I don't know off the top of my head if landscaping is a permitted or conditional use in that district. I don't know that off the top of my head. I think this is a property that we pretty much inherited from the township in some way, shape, or form. So I don't know the exact history of how it came to be in its current configuration or what it was before or kind of the details of that, unfortunately. It's been the landscaping company as long as I've been here and that's five years.
Yeah.
But it's also been for sale for the bulk of those as well.
Yeah. I remember when it was built, I was working here.
Okay.
Okay. My last question is on your diagram, the floor plan. I know there's three restrooms in there. Is, do they meet ADA or do we deal with that or does that go to somebody else?
We would deal with the ADA stuff and that's why we have that component in there that, you know, even if it met it now for, say, the landscaping business, that may change if all of a sudden you have an increased occupant load. And that's why we put the condition in that they have to meet everything to the satisfaction of the building official. But from the flyer that was provided, the market brochure for the property that was provided by the realtor, they do advertise it as having ADA compliant restrooms. So our folks would have to verify that, but I would hope that they're careful enough not to advertise them that way unless they actually are and have the handrails or turning radius for a wheelchair or whatever other components are needed.
Okay. Well, that's pretty much wrapped up my questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, Bob Zabinski, I have a couple of questions, if you would.
Sure.
Okay. The, on the conditions, number one, the existing parking areas are exempted from being paved. Does that, should that be handled as a variance rather than a condition? I'm wondering if we're stifling ourselves here. I mean, we're drafting something that isn't covered and it might be questioned later on. I'm wondering if that should be not necessarily put as a condition, but a grant or made mention of somehow, other than a condition.
We've had this come up before as well when we dealt with a previous issue of window coverings on a business. And because variances are limited to dealing with, under state statute, at dealing with very specific aspects of density, bulk, or height, as far as, you know, actual physical characteristics of a structure versus the setbacks and ground coverage. We had conferred with the city attorney some time ago and they were comfortable with treating an exemption like that through the conditional use permit process for something that doesn't otherwise qualify for a variance. As long as it's handled at the same time with the public hearing component, public input component, they noted that it could be adequately treated that way. So that's why we went this route. If it were something that were appropriate for a variance, we just would have done a variance at the same time, like we've done a number of other items where we've had, where we've considered multiple actions in, you know, one request.
Okay. Just along the gray area that we someday might question.
Yep. And I don't know if that request on my behalf or would, will get traction with either yourselves or the city council, but I think it's worth weighing. I'd like to revisit the, at some point, you know, some of our ordinances regarding hard surfacing in, for industrial areas and agricultural, industrial, agricultural, you know, rural residential areas where they don't necessarily fit hard and fast from my perspective. But this is something that I think is very specific circumstances that's worth consideration. And if it doesn't pass, then it doesn't pass. You know, they'll have to make accommodations to hard surface, then that's okay. But, you know, that's a, that's a big undertaking for a lot of payment in a, you know, an area that doesn't have any around for probably a mile in any direction.
Yeah. Yeah. It makes sense. It just, it seems low gray in being as a condition.
Yep. I appreciate the question. That's an absolutely, absolutely great question.
Yeah. The second question I had is similar. They're exempted from sprinklers. Just wondering if that also should be mentioned somewhere? Not, it's not a condition, but maybe it should be mentioned somewhere that we did that. They have, they have records that it has been done. And I don't see it anywhere else here, but I think it should be mentioned in there that they were exempted from that. Nobody can come back on them later.
And the reason I left it out of the condition specifically is because sometimes the circumstances change on the fly. You know, in its, in its current configuration, the building official said it was made of the determination that it, that it doesn't require sprinkling. But if they, if they all of a sudden decide to change something, those aspects can change and it's not the first time that it would have happened. You know, if they, if they do something differently or if they knock down walls and increase a gathering space or any number of things can suddenly put you in a different category from the building codes perspective. I don't want to speak too much on that because I, that's their area of expertise and not mine. If you prefer, I can reference a, I can put it in a condition that notes that in its current configuration and for the proposed use, it has been determined not to require fire sprinkling, but that revisions or future alterations could trigger that need.
Just so long as the city is covered, you know?
Yeah.
That, that somebody can't come back against the city for, at some point in time and say, well, why wasn't it sprinkled? You know, that's my only concern.
Yep. And we would get something. In fact, that paper trail may already exist. I don't have it in hand. But there was pretty, some significant research from our building official. That was among the first things they looked at at this project. That was at my direction because, you know, it's often kind of an oversight. You know, you get an organization that wants to look at using a building that otherwise looks great on paper, but when you... But when you, you know, say you, you buy it and then you're, you're getting ready to go in it and you, you submit your building permit, you want to put in a wall, you want to do a couple of other things. I don't want it to be a surprise when it's say, when all of a sudden it gets to the inspectors and they say, well, you gotta put in a fire sprinkling system, so you can estimate eighty thousand dollars for that. And that, that'll, that, that's just a no-fly. So that, you know, I, I've learned enough that you gotta put people and make those, uh, uh, put those things up or up for consideration early on, so that would, uh, I made sure that they had those conversations with the applicant and the, the, um, the, um, brokering real estate professional that's been, um, working with this particular project. So, um, they've had those discussions and I know, I believe that there was some, um, some contact with the state on it as well. So if, if there is something, we can get it. If there's not, we'll put it on file.
Okay. Just so long as it's covered, that's, that was my only concern.
Yep. I, I agree. It's not, not so much for us right now, but for, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years in the future, when staff turns over and something comes up and you need to know what the heck happened with that property. We, we run into that all the time.
Right. Great. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, John, this is Tim.
Yep.
I got a couple of questions. You said about plating it. On the one picture, it shows pins in the corners and all the way around with measurements. Is it already platted?
Uh, I don't believe it's, it's, it may have been surveyed, but I don't believe it's platted. Um, it, it doesn't necessarily, it doesn't have a, a legal, uh, description, I don't believe. Uh, yeah, it, it's, it's meets and bounds description. The plating would, the plating would only occur if they wanted to expand the, you know, put up a new building or expand a building. That's one of the triggers for plating in the city ordinance. So if they, if they keep it as is and they, you know, they're, they're welcome to work inside. Um, but i- it, it may very well have been surveyed, but, um, it doesn't have a meets and bounds description to it. You know, plating it would give it a, a lot one, block one, uh, uh, Jesus Christo Church description, or, or, you know, whatever the preferred name is. Um, but right now it's meets and balances, as the bulk of the area, you know, bulk of the properties in that area are.
Okay. My other question is, does the city need to require a well and septic inspection? Or, I mean, going from a, it looked like it was originally maybe built as a house and now it's going to a congregation with a lot more people? Is that something we have to worry about, the sewer, that far as the neighborhood property, or?
It might not be a bad thing to, to incorporate as a condition, um, um, as a condition of approval, just knowing that, um, you know, the occupant load and use might be more intense than the, than it was designed to cover. Uh, the ci- the city doesn't perform those inspections. Um, the, the county oversees, uh, septic and, and well. Uh, but that, that would probably be a, a good condition to include, just so we're, you know, they're, they're not all of a sudden putting away more of a, of a, uh, demand on a system that wasn't designed to accommodate that. So I, I can, i- if you're okay with it, I can incorporate a condition before this would go to the city council that, um, that would require that or basic. Uh, I would, I would recommend it be worded that, uh, that it be required. And then if deemed, if, if a upgrade or, um, upsize is deemed necessary, that they'd have to, have to do that to the, to accommodate their proposed occupant load.
Okay.
It, it may not need that, that much. Um, you know, they're not, if, you know, you can assume not everybody's going to the bathroom at the same time. But, uh, you know, if you have two hundred people using services, um, you know, that's, that's a lot more than a house or a, or a small business that has a handful of employees. So it's, it's, that's a, that's a reasonable condition to include, I think.
Okay.
And, and that may have already been done. I, I don't know for sure at this point, but I'll, I'll look into it and include a condition as such. If, if someone, uh, if, if you're comfortable and, um, or if you want to make that as a, any, a part of any motion, um, I'd recommend that.
Okay.
Uh, Bob Zabinski, one more time, John.
Sure.
Uh, I don't think it's the city's business necessarily, but I understand. And I, I know there was, I haven't paid attention lately. There's a debris pile there, um, that it should be understood between the parties as to who gets rid of that. It could seem that it should be gotten rid of.
Yep. I was, I was looking into that separately. Um, um, I, I was made aware that those are out there and, um, just so that they're, that they're removed one way or the other. We don't really care necessarily who does it. But, you know, so that, that there's some understanding that, um, that if the current owner doesn't get rid of them, then, then the church is, is their responsibility to remove them. Um, so that, that is something I was looking into. I was, uh, made aware of that just today, so I'm, I'm doing some checking into that.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
And actually, um, that might be something, I, I don't know, I don't know that right now it warrants a, a, a added condition. But if, if I'm not comfortable with the answer I get from the, the applicants, um, I would include that as a separate condition before it gets to the, to the city council in a couple of weeks, um, just so that, you know, that we're not stuck with debris piles from the, uh, a previous landscaping business out there for all time. It's, they just become home for things that you don't want hanging around.
Right. Yeah, I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you for, for noting that.
Any other questions?
Boss, John?
Yep.
Uh, just one question following up on boss. Uh, I saw that debris pile too. Um, because this place was a landscaping outfit or, you know, had, uh, probably chemicals or different things on the property whenever landscaping pertains to. I'm assuming that the city holds no liability if, uh, they find contamination after we approve, uh, this, uh, conditional use?
No, we, we don't. Um, we, we, that's entirely private. Yeah, the, we, we've never had an instance of, of that and, um, that's, that's not something that can come back for us at all. That's, that's up to them to, to review and make any determinations. All, all we're looking at is the use. You know, we're, we don't bear any responsibility for whatever the property's been used for in the past. You know, that's, that's up to the, um, full disclosure of, of the applicants. If, if they've got something out there that, that they know of, then, then by law, they should be disclosing that to, to a potential buyer, that if it's a, um, any sort of a concerning item or, or chemical or otherwise. We, we don't have any role in that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners have any more crope questions?
All entertain a motion to approve. This is Mark.
You want to put conditions on it?
Put the conditions, uh, stated, uh, by Commissioner Jansky and Commissioner Zabinski.
And the one through twelve?
Yes.
Sir, Bob Zabinski, I would second that motion with the, uh, aforementioned conditions.
We got a motion to second. All in favor, sing your by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Pass with all present.
All right. Thank you.
And sing it. Item number five. Lip Park Plan Commission will hold a public hearing, uh, City Hall, Nineteenth Thirteenth Avenue Nor- North at seven oh eight, um, on Tuesday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty, to hear the following request. Request of Marketplace LLC for review of platted unit development for redevelopment of property in B two commercial general business district, including reduction in minimum lot area for proposed subdivision of parcels. The prop- properties are legally described as lot one, block three, Park Square Plat Two, and Lot One, Block One, Park Square Edition, um, one ten Second Street South, and two thirty Second Avenue South, City Way Park, Burns County, Minnesota. You want to go with the background, John?
Yep. I will, I will do the background, um, and I'll, I'll just mention that, uh, for anyone, uh, watching now at home or, or watching later, um, I, I don't have the, anything to put on the screen right now. The, uh, my iPad, uh, ran out of battery, so, um, I'm, I'm reading this off a hard copy right now, so I apologize. We don't have the ability to put this on screen, um, which is unfortunate because this is a really nice, uh, proposal that they put together. Uh, this request has been, uh, submitted by, uh, Kevin Brink, owner and representative of Marketplace LLC, uh, who purchased the, their, uh, ownership group purchased the marketplace, um, Marketplace Annex Properties, um, within the last year or so, uh, and they've been coordinating with city staff in that time regarding improvements to the property, um, uh, as well as potential for additional new pad site building in the current parking lots on the northern side of the marketplace. Um, to that end, the applicant, after meeting with city staff, um, regarding the proposals, has opted to submit this application for a planned unit development to consider the improvements to the properties, um, kind of as a totality, as well as deviations from current city code standards regarding, uh, minimum lot sizes. Um, and I'll get a little more to that in a, a minute. Uh, I would note that, uh, um, I, I kept the report fairly brief, um, because the, the narrative and the information submitted from the applicant's team was, uh, so thorough, um, that I didn't feel any need to reiterate. Um, so, uh, I hope you had a chance to, to go through that. They, they did explain in great detail, you know, their, their rationale and, um, the, the reasoning for their specific proposals. Uh, when we have a planned unit development, what we're considering is a, a totality of a site or, or multiple properties, um, that, um, you know, to forward economic development or some other, um, you know, uh, benefit that the city can see from it, that we can have some flexibility with, with the, um, with the regulations and we can do them in kind of one swoop usually. Um, the properties, uh, will remain and propose to remain and function in largely the same manner as current. Uh, and staff would note that several of the deviations that are being requested, such as the setback requirements for the existing buildings and the total impervious, uh, coverage ratios, um, those aren't really a, a problem under the current city ordinance. So they're, what they're considered is, uh, uh, legal non-conforming uses. This building is, is old enough that, uh, it predates our current standards, you know. Uh, unless we're doing it as a brand new P U D from the ground up now, um, you know, uh, it wouldn't be considered an issue that, that it was built under a, a previous ordinance and doesn't meet the, the current standards in some aspects. Uh, the, the configurations would not change, uh, for the buildings, save for the establishment of a, of a new building uh, on a pad site in the northern area of the parking, parking lot of Marketplace. Um, the, the access to Second Street South, it's just to the north of, uh, Pizza Ranch. In that corner, um, you would see the, uh, potential for a, a new pad site building. Uh, the applicants, um, haven't identified a building. I don't know if they have one in mind or not, but, uh, the intent is that, um, the, the sale and development of that property could, uh, fund some of the other improvements, um, for the remainder of the, of the property in the marketplace and, um, what's currently being called the annex, but, um, is proposed to be rebranded into kind of a new updated name. Uh, the, the configurations wouldn't change otherwise, um, but rather these issues are, are being noted uh, just out of a, a, a abundance of caution and for full disclosure and consideration of the, the project. Uh, the proposal, uh, includes significant upgrades and facade improvements for the properties, which would bring them up to, to current design standards, as well as bring them into, um, current design, uh, and appearance and style. Um, the existing architecture, um, in the buildings are, are, are not blighted in any way. They're not in bad shape. They're just, they're just getting a little dated, uh, and, and the owner, owner group recognizes that and they, they really want to, to, uh, modernize these, these structures, um, make them more appealing, bring in some, some new businesses in there, um, work with the existing tenants to, to upgrade their appearance and, and keep the, the tenants that they have to the best of their ability. Um, I just want to make sure that's noted, that, that this is not a, a, a poor property at all. But it, it's just showing its age a little bit. It's a product like any other building of its times. And as, as years wear on, they, they start to, to look a little bit dated. Um, for this property, that it's a little more stark because of the, the redevelopment that happened a couple of years ago next door, the old Kmart property, um, with the, the dicks and, uh, fresh time and, uh, five below. Uh, those are all, you know, new, relatively new construction, so they, um, you know, they, they have that new look to them and Marketplace, um, stands out a little bit, um, next to that particularly. The, the updates that they're proposing would be complimentary pu- to both the, the neighboring redevelopments of, uh, the former Kmart, uh, as well as the, um, gradual updates and upgrades that we're seeing starting to take place on, uh, Second Street South and along Division Street. We've seen in the, the past couple of years, some of those businesses are, are getting updates. Uh, Starbucks was one of them. That, that's part of this, this property. Um, you know, we, we saw the McDonald's recently did a significant up, update upgrade. Um, we've seen a couple of other buildings. The, the Space Aliens became the, the, uh, uh, Dollar Tree and was overhauled and doesn't, uh, have that quite so loud paint scheme anymore. Uh, KFC just this last year went, undertook a significant remodel. So the, the, things are getting updated along that stretch and this would be, you know, uh, really an anchor on that, that area of, of modernizing. We have, uh, as part of this proposal, we've seen a, a, a signed update package, which will both update the current signage and bring them in line with current standards. Uh, we've already reviewed and approved that sign package, um, as it was proposed, as they, they did not request any deviation from the existing sign ordinances. It would actually bring them more into compliance with the city code. Um, aging signs will be replaced, one removed and, and updates, including LED, uh, dynamic displays to advertise the businesses across the properties, um, were being proposed. Um, the, their intent is that they hope that the use of the permanent LED displays and some of the, uh, the larger signs will reduce the, the frequency of the, uh, the temporary signs at some of the businesses there. I know that you see a lot of, uh, temporary sign clutter at a couple of the corner businesses. Um, and the intent is that they will be able to cut down on that and use the LED displays, um, more to a, a better effect. The major component of this request is to subdivide portions of the property below the applicable B two commercial general business district standard, uh, which has the minimum lot area of thirty thousand square feet. Um, currently, the, the Fuji Building, the, uh, um, Fitness and Smoke Shop Building and the Marketplace Annex are on a single parcel, um, altogether. And Starbucks and Marketplace are on a, a, another single parcel. This request would, uh, put Fuji on its own parcel, the Smoke Shop and Fitness Building, uh, All-Star Nutrition, uh, that's the actual name, and Starbucks onto their own parcels, as well as create the, the new parcel pad site for building at the north end of the parking lot, as I mentioned before. Uh, the, the, those four parcels would be below the minimum lot areas of thirty thousand square feet. With the specific dimensions were noted on the, 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 uh, concept and plat that was, uh, provided for your review. Most of them come in, um, not too much under that, but, um, you know, in that, that twenty thousand square foot, you know, general size. Uh, the applicant notes that the, um, rationale for the separation of these properties is to make them more adaptable to market changes, uh, essentially that, um, you know, they would have the ability to be transferred or sold independently if, if that were, were needed. You know, un- unless we had a, a brand new planned unit development, we would not see multiple buildings on a, on a single parcel. That's, that's only done in a, a, a planned unit development type situation. So that's, that's not the norm for, um, any sort of a new development specifically, so we can avoid situations like this. Uh, with the new pad site, parking redu- would be reduced by a, a relatively nominal amount. Uh, the remainder of the property would not have any major parking changes. They're, they are looking at ways to improve, and improve the, the traffic flow a little bit, uh, make it a little easier for customers up front, uh, improve the, the pedestrian experience for, um, people going to the stores or, or shops there. Um, but n- not really major parking changes. Uh, there are either, uh, existing crossozement agreements, or, or they would be created with sale of any properties, just to be sure that, that they- just to be sure that that they can use each other's, um, parking, uh, as is appropriate. Um, one aspect I would note is that, um, in the the southwest corner of the the Marketplace Annex property, um, there's Atlas Chiropractic, which is on its own parcel. That's a separate property, but it is tiny. Um, it's a small building on a extremely small parcel, uh, uh, and only has a handful of parking stalls. For years, under the the previous ownership of of Marketplace, they wouldn't, they would not allow, um, that building to use any of their parking at all, and that was really problematic for for getting someone into that, uh, into that building that could utilize it in the way that that was reasonable. Um, thankfully, we were able to figure out something there, but, um, that that last ownership of of Marketplace was, um, not amenable to to sharing parking at all. So, um, thankfully, this this ownership is and sees the benefit in in that, that it it benefits everybody if you're able to share parking across boundaries. Uh, the 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 total parking still exceeds the city minimums, uh, and staff, I don't have any concerns with the parking arrangement. Uh, really in function, uh, it wouldn't be any different than than what we did with the Kmart redevelopment and the establishment of the of the, uh, outbuilding there, the mattress firm. Uh, that took some parking stalls out of the equation, but it hasn't had a negative effect at all. Um, really, it's only improved, uh, um, the business aspects there, and it it continues to function well. I am supportive of the request and the proposal for the PUD in this case. Um, these properties have been purchased by a local owner that's expressed their desire to improve them, um, and this benefits our our local economy. Uh, but this does necessitate some consideration from of flexibility from some aspects of the city code, particularly the the lot area standards. Um, the the configurations of the property that require this are entirely an issue from the time of their establishment and and are no fault of the current owner. I do believe that the flexibility and approval would be a net benefit for the city in supporting the redevelopment um, of probably our largest multi-tenant retail office center, um, and would also help spur, uh, continuing this trend in other businesses nearby to, uh, continue to undertake their own updates accordingly. Uh, the owners, despite the, um, destabilization of the economy that, uh, the coronavirus issues have been causing, uh, the owners have, um, expressed their desire and commitment to try and forge ahead with this as well. Um, they want to they want to keep moving, and they recognize the, you know, that, um, the importance of doing that. So I I I appreciate that. Um, we've seen we've seen other projects that have, um, been put on kind of indefinite hiatus, given, um, the current situation, but the the ownership group here does want to does want to continue to the best of their ability. And, um, I think I would like to be supportive of that. At this time, uh, the preliminary and final PUDs are being considered together, uh, as well as the preliminary plat. We we can consider the preliminary and final at the same time. They're not always done that way, but, um, in a case like this, it it's totally, uh, reasonable to to do them together, where it's not a a brand new from the ground up, uh, building or development. Uh, if if this, uh, request were to be approved, only the final plat would consider what would require additional or further review by Planning Committee, Planning Commission, uh, except if there are, uh, changes which would be deemed major by myself, in which case I could I could request that they be brought back for further review by Planning Commission. Uh, and that's standard for any any project. You know, there's there's usually minor changes that that may come up, but, um, you know, we can approve those administratively, so, you know, just just that, uh, you're getting the bulk of, you know, what you see is what you get, that that it doesn't look totally different than than what you're seeing in renderings. Um, I would note, uh, I I'll just make a mention because we didn't receive any any notes for the public hearing here, but I did not receive any comments or or some emails for comment there, so, um, no comments received for the public hearing component. Um, that being said, um, I would recommend approval of the, uh, planning development and the, uh, preliminary, uh, plat with the following conditions. Number one, uh, design and configuration shall follow documents as a review approved by the Planning Commission and City Council. Minor amendments may be approved by Planning and Community Development Director. Changes or amendments deemed as major shall require additional review approval by Planning Commission and City Council. Number two, final plat shall be submitted for review and approval to Planning Commission and City Council prior to commencement of project. Number three, cross easement parking agreements shall be demonstrated to city prior to any sale, transfer or transfer of any newly created parcel. Number four, uh, applicant shall be, shall bear sole responsibility for any and all costs incurred with any relocation of utilities, uh, including but not limited to signs, fire hydrants, water sewer lines, et cetera, located along Second Avenue South and associated with pad site development or updating signage. Number five, signage, including temporary signs and any signage within or on windows, shall adhere to city standards. Number six, building permits shall be obtained prior to any work taking place and prior to fabrication or installation of any new signage. And lastly, number seven, exterior lighting, if any, shall follow city standards. Uh, those being my recommended conditions, uh, I'll open it up for for, uh, questions from Planning Commission members, if if any.
Um, prior to that, I want a motion to close public hearing.
May I have a motion to, uh, close the public hearing?
Mark Z second.
We got a motion in second to close public hearing. All in favor, single by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Public hearing closed at seven twenty-five. Okay, commissioners got questions?
The only one I'd actually done is on the separation of, uh, the coffee shop, tobacco place and fitness center and then Fuji. Look in their own parcels. I know they share parking lot now. Uh, there's no requirement for them to have a certain amount of parking around them or
that that
that's that is called the way it is.
Yep, and that's that's part of this request specifically, is that we're approving, um, basically in its current configuration, that we would be, um, providing an approval that says, as long as you can demonstrate that you have the the cross easements or ability to cross park, that there's no reason why you can't continue to move forward with that. It would really only come up in a sale, um, of of one of those properties. Because they're all under a common ownership now, it's not it's not an issue. But if they're put on their own parcels and one of those is sold off, um, then we'll we would want some assurance from that, um, excuse me, um, assurance from the the owners and the buyers that they have an agreement in place to to share the parking. Um, they would be considered, you know, what what's happening is that by giving this PUD approval, we would be saying that that it's okay to proceed that way. It wouldn't be considered substandard. So if we get a call that says, uh, from a a bank that says, my client wants to buy this property, I need a I see that it only has X number of stalls, and our research says that it that doesn't meet your requirement, then we are able to go back and say, it it doesn't meet the requirement of the ordinance, but it was approved under a planning development, so they 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 do have an okay to do that.
Okay.
And 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 this and it, sorry, uh, in in this case, be- because the because it's all owned by one by one ownership group right now, it they they have the ability, because they own it, they can say that, you know, when someone buys it, they they have the power in that situation to say, we we maintain the ability to to cross park. So that it I don't expect it to be an issue at all, because they're the, you know, they they have the power in any transaction to to ensure that they have that agreement in place with any potential buyer.
Okay, thank you. I just brought it up because I wanted to make sure I was involved in my time here with, uh, uh, chiropractor office. It started out as a car wash. There's a number of things since then, and that was
Yep, the the cross easements are key, you know, the hey, when you have it formalized, it's it's you can't really go back on that once it's been documented and recorded. Um, unfortunately, handshake type agreements, they they work great as long as everybody's friendly with each other, but, you know, if 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 one property sells and, you know, people get sour with each other, then all of a sudden it's an issue. And, uh, that's where you run into trouble, so that that's that's why I I put the condition in there to recommend that that we require the documentation on any sale or transfer. So it keeps us in, uh, in the loop and gives us some assurance there. And the applicant has noted they don't have any issues with that at all.
Yeah, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, John, this is Tim. I have a question. Wouldn't it be in the best interest, being they want to plot each building out front in its own parcel, plot Marketplace and Marketplace Annex, and then have a separate plat that's all the driveways and parking and everything else in its own plat, and that's a shared en- entity amongst all of them?
Uh, I I don't know that if it would be better or worse, um. I i- if they had come in with that, we would have looked at it the same way. Um, and I I don't know that they maybe considered something like that. I I don't know the the rationale that led them to their current configuration, but, um, I I would suspect that it was probably considered and and that they have some reasoning behind why they're they're doing it as the as the, um, in the current format. If I recall, I think I had some conversation with the with Kevin Brink, the the owner representative here, or part of the ownership group. Uh, I I apologize, I I I'm having trouble recollecting the exact details, but I think he referenced something about the why they they didn't do something along those lines, that that because the way the parking is kind of set up, they they would wind up with little stubs and little dead ends. It's it just doesn't flow very well right now, and that's what they're, you know, when they reconfigure the parking, they're they're going to do some improvements to try and change that. Uh, but I I think that's probably why you see the the plat as it is and not not kind of a separate layout for common or parking areas.
I just figured it'd take care of any argument in the future.
Yeah, it it makes sense, but, um, yeah, I I guess they they could have requested that. We wouldn't have had an issue with that, but I I think that there was something that probably prevented being done that way. And I I can look more into that question, uh, and have an answer. I I can't have it for you now, but I can have it ahead of a of a city council meeting if it if it comes up again. It would would probably probably be good to know.
Okay. Commissioners have any other questions?
Uh, Zabinski, if there are no other questions, I guess I would move for a throwdown. Be as presented. Let's see, let's see conditions set forth.
Okay, we got a motion?
Mark will second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in second to approve with conditions. All in favor, single by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same thing. Was that someone that did vote for it?
No, I think Tim, it was a late aye.
Okay. So pass with all present. And so our next, any new business or anything we need to take care of, John?
I don't have any any new business at the moment. Um, I I don't know that we will have to have a meeting next month. I don't, I'm not aware of any pending or expected applications, but I will keep you posted as as that may change. We've still got some time yet before anything might come in. I know there's there's one project I've been working with someone on, but I don't know that it'll come this month. Yeah, I think it'll more than likely be another month.
Okay. Um, can I get a motion for adjournment then?
No, there are
I'll move to adjourn.
We got a a motion in second to adjourn. All in favor, single by saying aye.
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 Pass with all presence. Meeting's over at seven thirty-three.
Thank you all for our inaugural conference call meeting. Hopefully, you found it to be fairly smooth. I don't know. I don't don't know how many of those these we may need to do, but, um, thank you for your flexibility, and hopefully we can get back to meeting in person before too long.
Thank you, John, for setting it all up and so on. I thought it went well.
Yeah, it it really did, so I appreciate that. So I think we're we're clear from cameras. Um, are we clear, Brad?